First, two thousand twenty is six P M. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Silver Consolidated School District Regular Board Meeting. We are here in person. The majority of us here at the Silver Central Office. And before we start, I would like to have a roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Mr. Flores?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Montenegro?
Here.
Dr. Diaz?
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand up and join me in the pledge of allegiance and in your express protest, all kinds of you? It is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible and the greater team, just as strong. To the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of a big friendship among the united cultures. Thank you. First on our agenda is review and approval of minutes for August seventeen, two thousand twenty, regular meeting. Everyone in the board has had a chance to look at him. Motion for approval.
Motion?
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Second?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Montenegro. Any discussion? Seeing none and hearing none from Mr. Khan. All those in favor who can talk, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next in the agenda, review and approval of minutes for September first, two thousand twenty, special board meeting. Motion for approval. So, Ms. McMillan, do I want a second?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Montenegro. Discussion, changes, corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor who can talk, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Item three, a consideration of approval of our agenda for tonight. Motion for approval? Motion by Dr. Diaz.
Motion.
Sorry, Patrick, I got a motion by Dr. Diaz. Do you want to second it?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Khan. And just understand why I think we're gonna have a little bit of a delay. So I'll hesitate a little bit. Okay, Patrick? Any discussion?
And four.
Corrections?
Yes, Mr. President. I've got some concerns I want to bring forth to the members of the board. I can't vote in the affirmative to approve tonight's agenda. I was a part of the agenda sending meeting earlier this month. And again, for I believe what's been the fourth month in a row, I requested approval to speak to this whole attorney when he put on the agenda so the board could hear the request and vote upon the request. This time I was told that it was gonna be too much of an expense and a tight budget year that we were, Mr. Brown said that we were still trying to manage or figure out how to manage a three hundred thousand dollar shortfall. All along, for the past several months, I've indicated that if there's been a legal opinion, that opinion needs to be shared not only with myself but with the entire board for our policies. Couple of days later, I received an email from Mr. Brown with an attached legal opinion dated April thirteenth. I asked that that be shared with the entire board. In July, the school board was supposed to evaluate Superintendent Brown, and we were told to give a debate until we met in person. In addition, the board has been told that there's been no other reasons for us to meet in executive session over the last seven weeks. Here we are, meeting in person, and we are not evaluating the superintendent nor discussing any other executive session items, such as the legal opinion that we received back in April. Yes, I'm frustrated. We have had important issues to discuss, and we have, the board have been signed. We have wasted much time and energy since March. The agendas have not been agendas of a board, they've been agendas of Mr. Brown and Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion for approval for a consideration of approval of tonight's agenda?
Yeah, I have a motion.
Who do I have a motion from?
Michelle motion.
I'm sorry, okay. Do I have a second?
I do.
That's right, I'm sorry. Okay. Seeing none, no other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May? Motion passes. Item four, information presentations to the board. Under program presentations, first on the agenda is Ms. Jeanette Medran. Ms. Medran, you are up. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. President, board members and community. Today, I'm gonna be reviewing the flowchart that was sent from the New Mexico P E B, the COVID nineteen response toolkit for New Mexico public schools. And I'll start with the flowchart on page ten. Elementary, school staff and student decision tree. So at the top, it discusses that this flowchart was put together for family, students and staff to better understand the steps that should be taken if they develop any symptoms at school. And testing of close contacts, which if a staff member is considered a close contact, testing is required for staff. And it should happen seven to ten days during the fourteen day quarantine. It also states a negative test for a close contact of COVID nineteen, positive individual does not end the quarantine period. So on the flowchart, it lists sixteen symptoms. If any student or staff experiences any one of those symptoms, and they're at home, they should stay at home and get tested. If at school, they need to tell a teacher or a supervisor immediately, go into an isolation room until picked up and get tested. If that test is negative, they stay home until they're fever free for twenty-four hours and the symptoms are improving. If the test is positive, they stay home for the ten days of the symptom onset and improving If there's a close contact, like I mentioned earlier, staff are required to test and fourteen day quarantine for staff and students. And a negative test does not end a quarantine for close contacts. So that's pretty much the decision tree for symptoms. Before I move on to the quarantine, is there any questions?
No.
Okay. Go ahead and go on to page eleven. The elementary school quarantine isolation decision tree. A staff member or student tests positive and they're symptomatic, they isolate for ten days of onset of the symptoms. And are able to return to school fever free for twenty-four hours and improving symptoms. If they test and they're asymptomatic, then their ten days starts the day of the test was positive. If a staff or student has close contact with a positive case, quarantine for fourteen days from the last contact and get tested, required for staff and strongly encouraged for students. Household members of a staff or student that test positive, the staff or student who live with a confirmed positive case must quarantine for fourteen days from the last day of which the infected case is likely to have been infectious, which is the ten days. And then they start their fourteen days. Staff who live with a confirmed positive case must get tested. Any staff member who had close contact with an infected household member of a student, like a parent or guardian, must also get tested and quarantine for fourteen days from the last contact. So these decision trees have been given to the district nurses and will be the flowcharts that they will be following in this district to decide which steps they will be taking. Any questions on the quarantine isolation decision tree?
Ms. Medran, Dr. Diaz has a question.
Go ahead.
Jeanette, so I, you may be gonna cover this, but I just wanted to ask, once someone is positive or more, I know students don't have to test to come back, but do staff have to test negative before they come back? Just for clarification?
No. If a staff member, a staff member is required to test, but a negative test does not end their quarantine, their fourteen day quarantine.
Right, but after that quarantine period, so say they had a positive test, do they just quarantine the fourteen days and they can come back, or do they have to demonstrate a negative test before they return?
No, if the, if a staff member is positive, then they do the ten days from onset or ten days from a positive test if they were asymptomatic. After the ten days and being fever free for twenty-four hours and symptoms are improving, they may return to work.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Please continue, Ms. Medran.
That was it on the two flowcharts that I was reviewing. I'm just open for any questions if there's any.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Ms. McMillan?
Yes, just a curiosity question. This document was sent out to the school district as a whole, and then, I was just curious, then, follow-up email was sent out that it wasn't a public document. Is it now public, or what was the reason for that follow-up?
This, the toolkit that was sent out is just for the district employees. New Mexico P E D will be putting together a public version, which does not have some phone numbers and contact information they don't want publicized. So there will be a public version available. And that should be coming out within the next two weeks, I was told.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other questions, Ms. Medran. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Gary Ward.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Brown, Silver Schools Administration. I guess first question is, can you hear me okay?
Certainly.
Mr. Brown asked me to come by this, or show up this evening to talk a little bit about a recent issue that happened with reference to the high school's construction project. Last Tuesday, we found out that we had kids coming in the high school, so we went into kind of a scramble mode to get our temporary certificates of occupancy to allow kids to be in the, and staff to be in the building in a working fashion. And on Wednesday, we had received an email from Raymond Torres, the deputy chief fire marshal, telling us that we could not and that we were obviously out of compliance by reviewing our systems inspections, our past systems inspections. And we all kind of were shocked. We did not know what exactly he meant. We talked it over a bit and reached out to Mr. Torres, asking him for clarifications on what it was that he was talking about, because it just definitely wasn't clear. We, I mean, we, everybody was really just didn't have any idea what, what would cause that. I mean, yeah, I even went to, I pulled my last year's inspection reports up, and both the systems inspection done by Fire System Installation Company and the fire marshal, the local fire marshal's firelight safety inspection, which reviews the inspection from the, for, for the, or reviews the inspection of the system itself, had no mention of any corrective notice that was an out of compliance type of notice at all. So it looked basically like all of them have looked for the sixteen years I've been there that we have gone through and six little doodads over the course of every year, and that was the end of that. So we kind of had to wait what was hap, with what was happening. I, I took it upon myself to contact the Public School Facilities Authority to discuss this with, with them, since they approved the plans initially in this process. And they typically from, once they leave PSFA, they get sent to CID and to the state fire marshal. They did indeed do the, that, and the fire marshal had our plans from, from April of last year, but we had not heard any comment to the negative or that they needed to see something done other than what we had on the drawings themselves up until Wednesday of last week, three days before we were planning on entering the school. We, they basically had me write up a sort of a short breakdown of what happened, the occurrence of the whole thing, what the issue was, and shoot it off to them, and they are in the process of working on the district's behalf at this point to see if they can get some leniency to what's going on. Typically, what would happen, if there's something they need to see done, is they would grant us a temporary certificate of occupancy and withhold and wait till we, till we get to the final certificate of occupancies, to give us that period of time to make those corrections. They're pretty much sticking to their guns and they're not allowing that to happen. I do not know why. I have not been able to get any positive information or feedback them as to why. Last night, Sunday evening, I received another email from Raymond Torres that basically expanded on what we, our questions of what it was he expected us to get done. And basically, they're looking at the synchronization of the strobe lights on the fire alarm system and to make it compliant with N F T A two thousand three. Our fire alarm was installed in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine. And according to what I have heard for the past fifteen, sixteen years, is that it was built in an era where synchronization was not part of what the requirement was, therefore we did not have to worry about the fact that they didn't sync perfectly. So we've been operating under that guidance for the past fifteen years, at least, that I'm aware of. Why it changed all of a sudden now with the state fire marshal, I have no idea. I have absolutely no clue. But once we got that, we were able to contact a couple of vendors and start working on what options we have to correct the things that he wants to see corrected and accrue the costs and any of that kind of stuff. So right now, this is an open kind of an issue. There is no final resolution to it, but it is in process, and we're working diligently to try to get this figured out. I guess that's kind of all I want, what I can tell you is, there are about three options or so of what we can do that we're thinking right now can be done to bring us within compliance. None of which can get done in less than a couple of months at the very best, which basically misses our October nineteenth target date for the high school. So I, I wish I had something better I could say, but that's really where we're standing right now. And I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of this and be available to answer any questions anybody may have.
Doctor Diaz has a question, Mr. Ward.
Did Mr. Torres say that there would be any leniency if he could see we were moving in that direction to meet his new compliance guidelines?
Question asked, question answered, no. That's one of the things that I'm keeping my fingers crossed that PSFA is going to be able to help us with. They have said that this is going on all over the state, that we shouldn't feel alone. It's happening all over, they're having to deal with this for other districts as we speak. So we sort of just got in line with everybody else. And there again, that's not typical. Typically, they would grant us a temporary, a temporary certificate of occupancy, allowing us the time to go from, to get to the final, which is another two, three months, to make whatever corrections they want to see happen without interrupting the flow of business. And for some reason, that is just not in the cards with him, and I can't figure, I can't figure out why. I have opinions and I have speculation, but this is not really a place for opinions and speculation.
Ms. Montenegro? Mr. Ward?
Yeah. Very so, what should parents of high schoolers be expecting at this point? We don't have another school board meeting until October nineteenth, which is the same day as the high school would be going back to school. So are we just going to do this on a, you know, wait and see basis? Let the, you know, administration and teachers let them know? I mean, we're obviously still waiting for a phase in reentry to be allowed by, by the P E D, so that's still pending thing. But just, you know, this is a public meeting, and I know a lot of people have been tuning in because we're in this limo. What should they expect?
The best I can tell you right now is unless something happens, and I don't know what that would be at the moment, I'm hoping that it'll be PSFA's assistance, we're not gonna be able to get in until we can make these corrections. And the best I'm hearing that we're gonna be able to make these corrections will be at least two months. I mean, one of his, one of the things that he mentioned in his email on Sunday was that the only way we should be in there, any, you know, on any kind of official capacity is if we had Fire Watch going on. So I thought that left us with an open to go ahead and have Fire Watch, have things, kids in there, et cetera and so forth. I posed that question to him, and he said, nope, that's only good for seven days. You can do it seven days, then you have to shut down. I mean, it's like he's backed us into a corner and he's not willing to work with us at all. Or he's not willing to work with me for some reason.
When would that two month timeframe begin? Because obviously, I don't think work started today.
Well, it's good. Once we decide what it is, that what's the best option, you know, right now, we're just in the figuring out what our options are mode. Once we know what that is and what those things cost, I, you know, I'll be going to Mr. Brown and talking to him about, and everybody about what our, what our options are, which one they want to follow through with, and we'll set that up. And I'm figuring you're looking at about two months from the time we know what it is we're doing and we tell, and we give the contractor some direction.
So, so we're possibly looking at the end of November, best case scenario?
That's pretty close.
Unless PSFA is able to.
Unless they're able to get some leniency given to us from, from the state fire marshal. And I guess Martica has had a lot of success doing that, from what I've been told. I'm not gonna hold my breath. I mean, to me, this is such a stunning thing that I just don't, I don't know what to expect. I would never have expected this to happen in all my, you know, I would expect to be hit by a car before something like this happens.
Is this something maybe that the governor's office needs to be aware of, or they can get involved with?
I really don't know. I think that most of the pub, most big public officials and whatnot are aware of this going on. I mean, I've talked to a couple of state representatives that are getting complaints about this, not just with public schools, but with any public entity at all. This is something that's going around the state, and they're really hammering down on it.
I would think maybe if we as a board could maybe come up with something to, to present to the governor along with other districts, so they're having the same issues in other, in other parts of the state, because I'm just assuming maybe the government, the governor isn't even aware of this problem.
There again, my, my previous comment was mostly just an assumption, but I can't see anything like that not helping. I mean, I, I just don't think I have enough clout to pull, to pull the horse across the line on this one for some reason. I've been successful in the past, but for some reason, this one just isn't coming through.
And I know we can probably reach out to Governor Monawas, too, who's probably listening online, and he could see the problem that we're having. Maybe he can be of some assistance to us and reach out and have the governor's here and explain to him what's happening, because this is gonna pose a, a big problem. But Dr. Diaz has a question, Mr. Ward.
So, Mr. Ward, I just, the timeline, so it sounds like a lot of this has been emailed, which I understand kind of the paper trail necessary, but have you spoken to him directly? Or have you spoken to, is it Martica, is that what you said?
At the onset, yes. Since that first email, no.
I, I just think.
The, the team has spoken to him, the, the project superintendent spoke to him today about the possibility of opening with Fire Watch, and he was told no at that. Most of my conversations today were spent with local, or with vendors, trying to figure out what our options were and what it was gonna cost us. And organized that as best I could, so.
And even if Fire Watch was approved, it's only good for seven days?
Stand it, yes.
Ms. McMillan?
Mr. Ward, what, I guess at this point, what capacity and can anybody be up there? I mean, what's our, what's our, I guess, census of what's allowed at this point as far as whether the administration or staff or even kids that, we just started workouts last Monday. What's allowed at this point?
Pretty much, the administration can probably be, and they can be in there doing their, the type of things they've been doing to this point. And the work can obviously continue to go forward, but to full-blown use the campus for the purpose with which it was attended is not allowed. In fact, he, he flat out came out and said that if we ignored the decree, he would come down and give us a seventy-two hour cease and desist order.
To what, I mean?
I mean, pretty strong language really coming from public to public official. I just don't, I don't understand, I've never seen it before.
So even if he did give us a cease and desist order, we could fight that and go to court with that as well, because the judge would have to decide whether it's legal or not, and the fire marshal.
Correct, there's, there are options like that that I think probably need to talk to Mr. Brown about. I mean, do you want to go, I, I was, I was asked not to bring this at this point to the attorney, but that is always an option. But there are consequences doing that, so what those may be, I think Mr. Brown is better equipped to answer for you.
Doctor Diaz?
You know, Mr. Ward, I think the reality is, we clearly shown some leniency in his delay with his response since April of this year. And so that, to me, shows that there's a little bit of incompetence on his side, so we can agree to share in this venture. And what that means is, I think he needs to show some leniency on his end. And if it means that we have to pester on a number of levels, then I think we need to do that. I don't mean it rudely, but the reality is, we're trying to service students. This isn't about a turf issue, this isn't about a government issue. This is about kids getting back to school. And if it's gonna be something as simple as synchronizing lights on fire alarms, then I think we need to get back to what's important.
I would agree, and in so many words, I'd expressed the exact same thing.
Can't exchange emails and wait a week or two for a response? I think it has to be a daily engagement on all those levels. And I, I know you're busy trying to look at the alternative to, to sort out vendors, but I'll, I'll be honest with you, I, I think it's complete incompetence on their end and the thing that. I, I think it's complete incompetence on their end that they didn't apply, and they are trying to hold us to standards that they never notified us of.
Well, yeah, PSFA's big issue is, is they've had the thing since April. They didn't give us any response to things that they were concerned about until three days before we wanted access. They think that, and I agree with them, it's, it's, to me, incompetence.
Ms. McMillan?
If it is, and Mr. Ward, um, kind of, I guess, along the same lines, how is the construction progress at Silver High coming along?
The, the construction itself is moving along beautifully. I mean, I don't know if you had a chance to get in and walk around the things that have been completed to date, but it looks wonderful. I'm getting nothing but positive feedback from anybody that's seen it. Uh, I think we're on target to go ahead and be pretty much done by Christmas with everything in its entirety. Uh, we, our, our budget is all less than what we had allotted, so we're okay there. Uh, there haven't been a lot of, uh, unexpected type things. I mean, the normal type thing you would run into, but nothing that's, nothing that's put any kind of stress on the district's finances or anything, or on the budget for the project at all.
So should we get the green light from the state to begin reentry and we get a green light from the fire marshal from October 19th be possible with the construction?
Uh, yeah, that's, they, they do, it's called a temporary certificate of occupancy. They can occupy the school and we have ourselves, and we're basically in areas that are cordoned off as just smaller workspaces. We stay out of everybody's way. I mean, the big thing that's going to be going on, on, you know, through the fall is the theater. So we just limit access that way for us to go in and public to use. So, I mean, it's more than manageable and it, but that's the big thing that we'll be working on more. Uh, this, this fall.
Ward, I believe, and this is very concerning news about the fire alarms and I, I would, I would ask that, Dr. Diaz, I know you're busy. I know you're busy doing all kinds of things, but, um, I would ask that you continue, uh, pestering, um, Ray and please keep, um, Mr. Brown updated. And I think we as a board through Mr. Brown need to be updated. I, I don't want to say daily, but at least every other day, because I think we owe it to the parents. Granted, it's not our, our, this isn't our fault, but I think the quicker that we give the news to the parents, that it may not be until the end of November. That way they have time to make different plans or different, uh, other, other, uh, changes they need to do for childcare or whatever. The sooner we know, the sooner they know. And does that sound okay to you, Mr. Brown? That you give us updates as soon as you get them?
Absolutely.
And honestly, I have been in contact with Mr. Brown at, at least once a day, sometimes multiple times. So we're talking about what's going on.
Any other questions?
One good question, uh, Mr. Ward, uh, Chute Diaz, how about the rest of the facilities, district wide? I think the last time we got an update, we were, um, waiting on some of the equipment at Jose Barrios, but how's the rest of the district, uh, facility wise, how are we doing?
Uh, Jose Barrios, that, all the equipment is in. We've got most of the inside work accomplished. There are things that we're going to have to do after hours, evenings, um, up until we're figuring fall break, we will do the big changeover from the multi-zones to the new systems. So it's moving along fine.
Thank you.
That was basic Plan B. Plan A was held up by material deliveries.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Anything else?
I think you guys, I've covered everything I need to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Sure, you too. Well, next on the agenda is, uh, S C D A, and this was Steele sent, the board members, uh, an email indicating some, some families just came up and she's unable to be here, but she appreciates the opportunity to be here and she'll send updates through email later. Next on the agenda, information to the board. Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, members of the board, community members, uh, the first item under the section in which I need to report to the board is we have a request for leave of absence, and it is for personal reasons for one of our staff members. And the, the actual request is there before you. And it is going to be an item to be voted on a little bit later in the meeting. If there's any general questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Continue.
Okay. The next item, asbestos management notification plan for the 2020-21 school year. This is a legal notice in which it is saying, notice is given that the Silver Consolidated Schools Board of Education announces the continued availability of the asbestos management plan for inspection. This plan is required under the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act and is available at the Silver Consolidated School Maintenance Office located between Silver High School and La Plata Middle School on North Silver Street, Silver City, New Mexico. A copy of the management plan is also available in the principal's office of each school in the district. During the month of June 2020, the school district designated person conducted the six month surveillance of all Silver Consolidated District's school facilities visually and identified any changes that may have occurred in the condition of known or assumed asbestos containing building materials. Also during the month of June 2020, the Habrona Environmental Company of Albuquerque, New Mexico, conducted the AHERA three-year reinspection of all asbestos containing building materials. And again, this is an item that will be voted on a little later in the agenda. Any questions?
Mr. President, is this a new, um, a new service leader in regards to the asbestos funding?
No, but I don't.
No, this is one that Mr. Rogers, Bill Rogers. That's one that he works, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Third item is secondary return clarification. We had a PED superintendent conference call this last Thursday, and it's, it's a matter that, that I want to ensure is clarified with our community, that our goal as a district is to open the district up beginning October 19th for our secondary school students. But we cannot guarantee that that is going to be the case. It is ultimately up to the public education department as to whether or not they will allow schools to, uh, allow reentry for secondary students. And so it is not a district decision. This is a decision that is made at the PED level. So I just wanted to ensure that everybody was aware of that, that the October 19th date is a goal for us. And in light of the information that Mr. Ward shared with us, Silver High School, uh, quite possibly will be a little later. So I just wanted to ensure everybody was aware of that. And then we've got some additional information, uh, that Mr. Clough can, can share with everybody regarding the reopening of our current situation with elementary students.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, members of board, administration, members of the public, um, today, as you are well aware, is our first day of hybrid. Um, and I just want to stress to the community, it went well, but as always, we want something new. We can always improve. Um, so we're going to continue to work on this. Administrators did a great job getting kids in and out of the buildings today. Uh, the longest delay we had to start a school was seven minutes, um, with regards to getting kids checked in with temperatures, all that stuff. And they were able to adjust during school day, but for the most part, the entry and the operation of the school day went real well, except to make the board aware, uh, we're having plumbing issues out at Harrison Smith with the new, uh, construction. So Mr. Sadio had to give a call to me to get Mr. Ward over, so, uh, Ruben went over to check on it. We're getting with the contractors, uh, to see what's going on over there. But, uh, that was the biggest issue we had today with that, uh, with regards to reentry, uh, for the elementary. Uh, buses ran a little bit late, but that was anticipated, and our, our administrators did a pretty good job of doing that. Uh, based on today, I had four people report back, uh, with regards to attendance, because what we're doing as part of our plan is to get numbers of the AMB group of attendants and compare it back to the registration, and then making contact with those parents by the end of the week to make sure they're attending, or if they've changed their mind of whether being in person or online. Um, so today, uh, Harrison Smith had 99, um, students show up across the grade levels. Um, Cliff had 55 out of 57. They had almost perfect attendance at work, uh, that were there, and that was all the students that they knew were coming, so they did a very good job of doing that. Uh, Silver Scholars had 28, and, and with eight on remote today, so we had 36, which is a little lower than what they anticipated, but they're making calls to parents to make sure they're aware they can come in. Uh, the sped parents for the secondary of our high-needs kids, uh, that are classified as our cohort C or reentry plan, we had four per, parents confirmed they were bringing their children. They, they showed up for seven through 12, and there are another three to four that were finalizing ICLPs today, so they can start services tomorrow or Thursday, depending on what's going on. Uh, Stow and JB had not reported to me yet today, um, so they were working on their attendance. They're supposed to give me information tomorrow morning. I'll have it so we can start our attendance intervention plans with them. And Mr. Trujillo had his parent orientation today by rotating groups of 16 parents through all day, and it went very well. I was over there for about, about 45 minutes watching the rotations, and it went through very well. Um, meal service, breakfast and lunch was provided and worked very well, um, as they went through the days. Uh, transportation, of course, first day of school is any day of school, you do your best job of planning. There were some buses that were running, but most of them were on time. And a lot of parents today brought their kid to their first day of school to see what was going on, so we anticipate more bus riders as the week goes along, because our administrators are being filled by parents. They just want to check out the check-in procedures and all that stuff before they put their child on the bus. Um, so other than that, um, none of us have been prepared for this, board members, administrators, teachers, students, parents. But for our first day, I think we did a pretty good job of anticipating a lot of things, and we're going to continue to work, adapt and be flexible, and make sure we keep improving, keep evaluating. I talked to all the elementary principals this morning, they're continuing to reva, reevaluate their plans. The biggest building we had issues with was JB, and you guys are well aware of JB. We have all those fences out in front, the smaller parking lot on the one side of the building, and getting those kids in with the parents who are supposed to come, they came, the bus was five minutes late, the second bus was 10 minutes late, so create a little bit of backlog, but though they got their kids across us really quickly. I'll give, I'll, I'll commend our staffs, our administration for the great job they did today in this uncertain time with that. And we expect our numbers to start increasing, because we're starting to see more and more of our special ed students, uh, respond, wanting to come back to school, as well as an increase of parents making inquiries just today of what the process is that they want to come back after being online for a short period of time. So we are ready to address those things. Um, also, with regards to our special ed plans for the district, I know from the, uh, special board meeting on September 1st, we prioritized our cohort C, which was our high needs per pet guidelines. And also as part of that plan, uh, we are also looking at other alternatives to get the other sped students back within the pet guidelines that are defined as five to one small group. Uh, Kim Hoplin's been working really hard on that, but we had 87 students identified in our cohort C that we had made parent contact with, and 50 of them had verified their enrollment status as of last Friday. Today, we received roughly between 20 and 24 requests of that group. And now we're working on alternative plans of how to bring our secondary special ed students back. And keep in mind, the pet guidelines, um, outline that those are our high need at-risk students with regards to sped. And the categories are those that receive multiple services, not necessarily just academic interventions, and those that are at risk because they do not have connectivity at home. And we're having a very difficult time trying to get old parents to find out if they're having connectivity issues, and our case managers are working very hard to narrow that down. But we've been able to get our attendance officers to go do home checks, so we're getting a grasp on that realm too. So we'll be looking at this week of that five-to-one ratio for those, those at-risk students at the secondary level, to get them back before the 19th. Uh, we've had to make alternative plans as well to make the board aware. Our sped program right now for secondary of those that have, have, um, verified their enrollment in that program has been moved to La Plata. So we have our seven through 12 sped programs at La Plata because of the fire alarm issue, so that we make sure the safety's put forward of that. So I want to make sure the public's aware that for those parents that are verifying their students coming back, they are at La Plata, so we don't have to run into issues with the fire alarms and the public safety that are there. So I feel our staff did an incredible job today, and I can't commend them enough for doing it. It was great seeing kids smiling coming into school. There were a couple of them who took their mask down and just go like that to make sure they saw they were smiling coming in, but it was, it was good seeing kids come back. Uh, a lot of the buildings did specials, I don't say ceremonies, but decorations as they were coming in to make it a little bit special, because how many kids like starting school on September 21st? We usually start in early August. Um, and our staff did a great job of doing it. Protocols were followed. Um, parents were very, very, um, I don't want to say ecstatic, but yeah, they were happy to get kids back into schools and, and see that they're coming in and doing those things. But it ran as smooth as we can anticipate for the first time ever doing something like this. So I will be happy to take any questions with the board for clarifying as we go forward.
Dr. Diaz?
I, I just want to know if you figured out how you're going to bring in the remaining at-risk kids if they're not cohort C? How do you plan on bringing them back in, or is that still in the works?
Well, it's still in the works, Dr. Diaz, because what is happening right now is we're identifying, because there are categories that PET is giving us to reach out to first in tiers. And I, I hate to say this, and this is probably the group that we need to get to the most, are those that are having severe only academic interventions in their plan, but that's the lowest tiered group that PET has set up in their priorities for acquisition. Now, if they're in that lowest tier with having access problems, they get bumped up. So that's what we're doing right now, is trying to identify that. And we have a 21.9% sped population in our district for this school year. It's a rather large number. When you're looking at 2,400 students, 21% of that is right around 400 students we're going to try to evaluate of where they are at in that plan. So we appreciate the patience of the communities who've worked through this, but PET has made it pretty clear that if they are not in a enclosed classroom setting or an isolated setting in a cohort, we have to go five-to-one ratios. So we got to get our teachers involved in those conversations on the plans of how they would like to do it, and we need to identify by our at-risk reporting, the highest need students, so we're not running afoul of our sped funding and the at-risk funding that we get in our, in our funding formula, because those are two separate pots of money that we, that never, federal and state funds shall mix, as I say. They shouldn't be mixed in the, in that formula, and Michelle makes me aware of that every time when I try to make a request we've done in the past I was unaware of. So, um, that's what we're working on right now, and that's our next steps in this plan. I know our teachers on Wednesday have been giving time, or sped teachers, to reach out to parents and make sure of the connectivity, and that's why we're doing the attendance reporting too, because that's also a, a part of this that PET is requiring us to have a attendance improvement plan, and we're required to reach out to those students that aren't online or showing up. So it's a very complex issue going forward, and I think we've got a good plan going forward to identify it. Now we just have to see, A, the locations we can take them to, because our biggest location we're looking at using right now can't be used because of the fire alarm. And now we have to look at other alternatives with that and looking at what we can do and do that. And I also want to make sure the public's aware of this too, as part of our plan, and in that with the loss of intervention, loss of learning time or intervention plan to be submitted to the state with the assurances. We will be shortening some days, but kids will be staying in the building, and we'll be providing those interventions to all students, not just sped students, but to all students as required by PET to address the loss of learning. And that's where we're going to make up some of that special education service time that we've lost from the previous of parents either not being, being online and those types of things. So we have a complex and comprehensive plan to address the needs of all students as part of this. So, um, we appreciate the patience as we work through this and looking at it, because it involves transportation, food service, and a lot of other entities at the district. We have to coordinate those types of things. We have to coordinate those types of things.
Mr. Montenegro.
Just wondering if you guys, I mean, follow our forward. How many kids that are enrolled chose to stay online versus come back?
As of last week, Ben, if I remember correctly, we're about sixty-seven. We're about two-thirds, one-third of what was declared by the principals and was adopted. Based on the numbers that I saw today, um it wasn't close to that. And that's why we're implementing our attendance intervention plan to track down those parents to make sure. Cause I have a feeling that there are good, there's, I don't want to just say issues, but we're expecting numbers to gradually go up this week as they come and and seeing as we move forward. When we did the teacher surveys out and had the parents notified either by parents who had them felt or building surveys they had sent out, it was right around sixty-eight, thirty-two, seventy, thirty, depending on day because they were able to submit. And I think some of the, some of that is still uncertainty. And as they see as this becomes more and more efficient, I think we're going to see an uptick because we've saw an increase in the sped request to come back to school. And the general population, I think, is still waiting to see the outcomes and doing that, holding out hope that we get back to full scale. But we start to proceed as if we have kids in the building on the hybrid model until further notice. And again, it's all depending what the public health orders are. If October nineteenth is realistic for our secondary, we have to wait to see if the public health order of PET guidance is at that time.
And so um you, is there, is there a timeframe where they can no longer opt out of, I mean, you know, stop doing online to come back to it in person? But there was prior, I don't know if that's.
There was prior, but the issue with that, um Mrs. Montenegro, is with regards to the new attendance act that was passed last year by the legislature, um parents have total authority to control that and they can bounce back and forth. The only requirement PET requires us to do is attempt at our best effort to maintain integrity of the cohorts. So when we calculated our cohorts, we did that knowing there were certain percentages of kids that would be in there. So there might be a slight imbalance with regards to we may have fifty percent, fifty percent online versus hybrid, but they're A through L. So that way, when we come back, we could still have all those students together with the same teachers when we calculated that. So when the principals were making their cohorts, they took that into account. You may see some classes where, I can use my wife as an example. She has sixteen in her first cohort because very few of her kids opted out in the A through L cohort, cohort A. In her cohort B, she has thirteen because she had seven kids opt out for that on average in the class. So her average class size is thirteen in cohort B, but all those kids are calculated into there. It's very complex situation, but we have to maintain a balance of fifty-fifty as close as we can. And that's another complicating issue with the sped populations that we have. Um our lower grades or the extra grades two through five have a very large population. So those regular ed kids that are on or sped kids are in inclusion models or have those services, they're a part of those cohorts already. We're talking about our sped population that's secondary right now, that's a very small percentage that hasn't returned yet, that we're looking at trying to get them back as quick as possible. So those students that are on IEPs are considered as part of that cohort. The cohorts here are those high intensive service students that we have that are there that are, that have been asked to come in. So we're still working on a plan to get those secondary population into this. And hopefully we can get that worked out Wednesday and have a plan together with transportation, all that stuff, what can happen with five to one. Then we have to contact parents, they have to opt in to do that too. That's another requirement with PET. We have to live, get the parents to opt in or opt out. And that includes school attendance, whether online or in person. We tried to limit it, but if we would get a complaint filed against us, we would have to look at allowing that. But I can tell you honestly, when our parents have come forward, they're looking, we've asked them if they'd come in and stay for two weeks and we haven't heard an argument yet from them when it comes to that. Um someone's saying, well, I'll go to the end of nine weeks. Um someone would say, well, I'll come in at the nine weeks. So our conversation has been very positive with our parents. We've heard very little pushback on that. So parents are willing to work with the administrators in the district on those requirements. So it's been a very positive experience based on the calls that I've known and the administrators I've talked to about that, that our parents are very understanding and understand those those limitations we have placed on them.
Dr. Diaz.
Um so just moving forward, I know this is a tough situation and there's this gray zone um outside of our cohort C. But I, I don't know, as a community, that's where I hear most of the frustration. And so I would just really encourage uh us as a district to really focus in, but you know, I think we really need to involve the teachers taking care of these kids, number one. And and number two, there has to be a timeliness to this because if the process drives on and we're doing these multiple analyses, we're in November, you know. And so I I just, I know we're working through this and I know it's a lot more complicated than we make it out to be here at the board meeting when I make a statement like that. I do respect that process, but I just want it to be timely because these kids' days matter. Days matter for graduation rates, days matter for these kids and their wellbeing and staying in school long-term because once they leave, they don't tend to come back.
Mr. Khan.
Uh yeah, I have a question for Mr. Clough. Mr. Clough, besides some of the buses going late to Josevarios, did Sandra report anything else on the transition on transportation um with the other uh elementaries that Christina could possibly.
Not really major with elementaries. Um as always here at Harrison Smith, the buses showed up early uh because of lack of ridership. Um but overall, the buses ran, we're still working through some sped um assignments because we did have parents that brought their sped students today into the building, then requested transportation with the with the transportation request form. So Kim is working on that tonight and getting that information out. So we're still working because some of this was uh timeline and paperwork was not submitted for us to be able to do it. But we tried to plan as best we can based off the bus routes from last year. But we still have to work through some of the bus assignments like that and seeing numbers. And like I said today, there were a lot of parents that brought their kids to school that normally would ride the bus, just so they knew what the processes and procedures were, Mr. Khan. So we anticipate ridership going up as the week goes along for the cohorts.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Things on the agenda, Mr. Clough.
Okay, again, Mr. President, board members, administration and members of the community, I have one request tonight uh is the continued membership of Silver Consolidated Schools with South Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments. Uh this is going to be our third year of membership with them and they help us with grant writing, uh participation in grant uh processes. Uh the cost of the membership is four hundred dollars and we've already had it budgeted and I believe Michelle's already paid the check uh with that. And we get a lot of support services from them for a lot of things. Um and grant notification helps us with grant writing assistance and partnering with other other entities. Um with regards to grants is which we're part of the County Economic Development Association Grant, um which we're a member of with the COG and we'll receive benefit from that because that could be issued. There's some workforce development grants that we're partnering with them that we could receive additional funding from for our CTE programs. So I'm asking for approval of the resolution. Uh that's a yearly thing and we maintain membership until you guys vote not to be members. So that's the option of the board, but it's four hundred dollars. We get a lot of benefit from Basilla and her expertise as well as lobbying. Um I don't know if that's a good word to use. Let's say political influence in Santa Fe uh with regards to going forward. It keeps us advised a lot of the of the political legislative functions and sends us updates on a regular basis of what's going on so we can stay ahead of the curve when we have to go the LFC or LESC for our testimonies.
Thank you. Next, Ms. McCain.
Um, all right. My favorite subject, the budget, you know. Um what I did want to mention to you, um what I'm covering today, um I'm asking for approval of our budget adjustments for um the what the big ones that came from the state of New Mexico from the PET. Um they gave us a number, um they're asking for a reduction of a million, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That is a step one budget adjustment. Um they were hoping to have us do one um budget adjustment, one adjustment to our budget in its entirety to cover everything, but they weren't able to get all of the programs approved and all of the applications for the the different programs approved. This budget adjustment includes the reduction to um the unit value that they gave us, I think July thirtieth was the date that they gave us our unit value. So that includes that impact, which was about one point one million dollars. And then um the extended learning time, they said, um was also included in this reduction. So um they did not um uh fund our extended learning time program at this point. Um I don't know if there's any more um steps to it or if they have just given us a point blank denial. Um the next item that they will um be reviewing and looking at is the K five plus that they um uh added into our budget. That's two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, seven-hundred dollars, so three-hundred thousand dollars that um we could be looking at another um budget reduction if they do not approve that um program in the upcoming month. Um the other thing that, um a couple of things that are still pending, um kind of hanging over us in a very negative light for me, um are the student numbers. Um uh PET has still, I have not seen any um change in their stance that they are looking at reducing our um the school budgets after the fortieth day count. And um I don't know if they have, you know, spoken anywhere about leniency, but they haven't said anything to us in the budget, you know, world to say that, you know, they're not gonna, they're gonna give us some consideration or anything. And at the time that I was looking at it, I think we were down eighty-seven students and that was roughly another four-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that could be another hit to our budget. But you know, the the current one, the the million-two, um we had worked in our um staffing meetings and stuff, you know, looking at, you know, positions that could be absorbed and stuff. And so we're, we're good with this, you know, um reduction. We're prepared for it and and we're able to do it without feeling the the pinch so much. Um the K five plus as well, I think we had enough that we had trimmed, you know, barring any other changes. I mean, if we have to bring in um staff to cover staff that are, you know, not able to work in in the school environment and stuff, I'm not sure what the impact that's going to be. And so we have to constantly be thinking about that. I talked to Mr. Brown earlier this week about um our cafeteria because in years past, it was not only self-sustaining, but it was actually making a profit. And um as the years have gone by and now that we've gone to the full free and reduced, now at that point, we were just at the barely breaking even point. Well, now with the the um the way that we're having to do the the go lunches and 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 stuff, we're not making the revenues that we were making before. And so we're making probably a third of what we were um able, you know, which was, it was self-sustaining in that we didn't have to pay for the, any of the staff or any of the cafeteria items. And now we're going to have to look at paying for some of those things out of the operational budget just to make sure that, you know, we can continue to provide the lunches for the students. And so, you know, we're, you know, constantly looking at things and and I I try to, you know, maintain communication with Mr. Brown and Mr. Clough to let them know where we stand so that, you know, we're, you know, proactive more than reactive when it comes to these changes that we're going to have to make. Um we've already um gone ahead and put the um cafeteria, the supervisor and her secretary, we've, I went ahead and put them in the operational budget because I just didn't feel like it would be a safe thing to put those those expenditures on a budget that wasn't sustaining itself as it was. And so that's helped it a little bit and only time will tell. Once we're into the um hybrid model, you know, are we going to be, you know, have more lunches served and and have more reimbursements? I mean, everything about this year is not normal. So to be able to try to figure out what's happening and and how to anticipate all of the changes, it's just not possible. But we're doing our very best to stay ahead of the game and know what's coming, you know, or, you know, at least try to foresee what's coming and be prepared for it. Because, you know, I don't expect to come out of this year, I mean, the expectations of having a four percent cash balance, things like that aren't even remotely on my my radar. What I want to do is get through this year with a budget that can pay all of the salaries of the employees that are, you know, currently working for the schools and every, all of the the um, all of our budgetary requirements to be met. You know, anything beyond that will be cake on it, you know? That's the point that we're at. And, you know, we're at the mercy of the governor, the legislators and their decisions. And we hope that they take a long heart and look at what they're doing and understand that, you know, we still have the teachers, you know, we still have the salaries and benefits. We have all of the expenses that come with running the school and they're looking at taking away those revenues. And it's pretty much the equivalent of pulling the rug out from under our feet if they continue to do that. And so, you know, we will do everything we can to stay ahead of it and, you know, work to maintain our budget. But that's where we're at right now.
Any questions? Ms. McCain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mrs. McCain, uh thank you for all the, all the work to the uh doing the work over and over again with the changes in the budget. A question on the forty-day counts and Mr. Brown and, but when, you know, better winners are forty-day in a good place. And and they are, they're, I mean, online attendance is, it's counts for that. So it's not like.
We're losing those kids.
We're, we're having to wait till hybrid to to be an official count because they're taking attendance or they were trying to figure out attendance now. And so the online portion is, it was just as critical as the elementary.
Absolutely. Yes. You know, it's just a matter of of making sure that everybody is accounted for and that, you know, because the eighty-seven kids that I talked about earlier were kids that we weren't able to make contact with, you know. We, you know, they were either there last year and hadn't re-registered or hadn't followed through and completed a registration. And so, you know, we didn't have a completed entry into school. Okay. However, it may be online or hybrid.
One who's supporting it?
We're looking it up right now.
Okay, I'm not like off the top of my head. No?
It's normally right before we go on fall break. So that sounds about right. They do not have their. Ben, are you finding anything in it? They don't have their normal calendar up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but usually it's around the ten.
Yeah, it's around the ten. But they don't have their current forty-day count, forty, eighty, and a hundred-day count calendar up on the PET website.
Or I understand we're waiting for P to. We're waiting.
They have all the anticipated testing dates that are already been moved once, so.
Was that, uh, Mrs. McCain, was that count uh for the reset? Was that after the uh middle day holiday?
Um, I was, I think, I believe it was for our last board meeting that Rebecca kept those numbers. So in August.
We usually have a little bit of a stick after that holiday and we.
Yeah, if anything were normal.
Any other questions? Any more, McCain? Next on the agenda, finance, training reports.
Oh, okay. I thought that was just part eight.
That's okay. Dr. Diaz.
Um, I just had some questions about the salary and increment schedule.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Um so just, I I guess I can make a generalized question. One was, can you just speak to the changes in the assist fee increment? Um that we added, there was a change in um amount? And then, uh, and I'm sorry to throw that on you there. And then speak to any new increments that were added?
Okay.
Basically, we're asking what's the difference between what we got initially and then what we got second year, right?
Yeah. The only.
On the last year.
Okay. From last year to this year, um that we have the um, the twenty additional, the extended days for athletic, athletic trainer, we're not real sure, um being as this is a new position, just how many days are going to be necessary because he's got to be compensated for, you know, obviously his contract will cover him, you know, his classroom time and any time during the regular workday, but all the time that he will be, you know, required to um travel with the teams and and be at every, you know, all the games and stuff like that. It's not an administrative position, so it's not exempt from additional compensation. And so we're, you know, we went with twenty days this year, I think, before we knew. And so we're, you know, we went with twenty days this year, I think before we knew that COVID was going to be a thing and, and, you know, that we would have restricted number of, a restricted season for different sports and all of that. And so right now it's at twenty days. That's the starting point. If it looks like he, you know, that person is working more, then we'd have to adjust those, that number of days to, you know, fairly compensate him for his time away from home. And so that's what we have on the extended days. And then the other positions that we have are the ones that I kind of mentioned before last year. These are supervisory positions for our ancillary staff. We are having to hire, um, what do you call, we have two psychologists that we hired. They're, they're not psychologists yet, they're in training and so they require supervision. And so we need to have to compensate the psychologists that are already on, on contract for supervising them because they have to sign off on and go over everything that these people do in order for their, their work to be approved. And that goes the same for our SLPs and our CODAs. We have to have somebody supervise them. And so we compensate those people that are supervising these employees that are working to get their full accreditation in the field that they're working in. And this is not optional, it is something that is required by the state that they be supervised. Okay? And so these, these were all on the salary schedule for years and years and if we needed them, you know, they were there and if not, they were left blank. And then in the.
Prior administration.
Yes, prior administration took it upon themselves to eliminate some positions to create funding elsewhere. And so they, a lot of these positions were eliminated because they didn't have anybody on them at that point in time, but that's not the way they're, you know, meant to be. They're, they're supposed to be on the salary schedule and the increment schedule. The increment schedule is a list of positions that could possibly be filled for the year. They're, they're approved coaching and sponsorship positions that, you know, we may or may not have that year. If we don't have an interest in chess and, and nobody's going out for the chess team, then we won't have a chess sponsor and we won't have that expense. But if, you know, the next year we do, then we'll have it. And that's why it's not a liquid document that gets changed from year to year. You set it and you, you know, I mean, with, you know, some changes like we added a bowling team, that, you know, that's something that we, you know, with our community, we needed to have. And so Mr. Will Hocken, one of his final acts as the athletic director at the high school asked me, you know, if, you know, he had such a seen an interest, he polled a number of kids and he saw that there was a need for that. And so we added a bowling, you know, bowling sponsors to the teams a few years ago. You know, it's things like that that change it, but it's a matter of, you know, well, I don't want that this year, but next year I might, you know, it is set positions that we are funding and if we need them, we use them, if we don't, we don't use them. And as I'll speak to what you were talking about, Ashley, about if we have a coach, we'll use the cheer coach. If we have a head cheer coach and we don't have an assistant coach, then that doesn't mean that the head coach gets both salaries. You get the salary for the position that you applied for. Now, what happens a lot of times is we'll have an assistant coach and we start the season and head coach quits. So we pay off the assistant coach, they get moved up to, and they get prorated amount of the position they're moving into. But we don't give anybody just for the sake of, you know, saying, hey, you know, we didn't fill the, the position below you, so you get to get both positions. No. Now, in an example, the same example I gave you, if we have the varsity coach for basketball and we need a ninth grade coach and nobody applies for it, so that person agrees to coach both varsity and ninth grade, those are two separate positions, two separate teams, they deserve both increments. You know, I talked to Mr. Brown and, and Mr. Clough about the increment schedule in looking at, you know, how to save some money. And, you know, I, I look at the positions and for the times that the coaches work, this money is not a lot of money. And so for all of the, the things that they have to change and accommodate this year, even on the shortened schedules, I feel like if they work that increment, they deserve to get paid the increment in full. You know, I mean, I, you know, you can save a little bit of money penny pinching here and there, but for the time and effort that these coaches and sponsors put into giving our kids so that they can participate in all of these extracurricular activities, I feel like the compensation, this doesn't even begin to cover the work that they do, but it's what we have. And so if they are working in that position, I feel like they should be given, you know, full pay. Now, if it's a position.
They might as well go to our, to the penny analysis.
Yeah. And if it's a position that we truly cannot have, you know, like, I don't know if wrestling's going to happen, you know, in the environment that we're in right now, then, you know, we won't be able to pay that coach because he's not going to be able to do, you know, have a wrestling season. You know, I, it's things like that that we have to look at on a case by case basis. And I hope to goodness that somehow we're able to pull all of these things out and, and be able to, you know, at some point in time because all of these kids, I mean, they have their sports, their extracurricular activities. And, you know, for me personally, I had a son who, without basketball and the motivation to keep his grades up would not have made it through high school. And it was just that hard to get him in, you know, to show up for class until basketball season. And then it was like, wow, you know, I've beaten him, you know, he's beating me to the car. And, and I know he's not, you know, a unique child in that aspect. I mean, there is just, it's something that's necessary and something that I feel like our teachers work and will have to work probably harder this year than any other year in trying to get through these seasons. And so for those that, you know, we are able to complete, we are looking at paying them the full increments. And, oh, the other one that we talked about was the teacher mentor. The teacher mentor is something that was set up by the state of New Mexico. They used to fund it. Now it comes out of our operational budget. What a surprise. But what it is, is we have first and second year teachers or first and second year in this position teachers. Say if you were a regular teacher and then you come in and you were going to be a special ed teacher that you'd never done it before, they would provide a mentor for you, another person in your field that would kind of give you guidance and show you how, you know, show you the ropes. And for that, we pay them that luxurious teacher mentor salary, you know, that we have on the increment schedule. But that's what the teacher mentor is. It is something that was mandated by the state. They still mandate it, they just don't fund it.
Can I just, so I asked Michelle about a couple of these, so I really appreciate you taking the time to go through twice.
No, not a problem.
And, and I just had a question, you know, in a time where we're trying to kind of look at crunching hard. I agree that all these people preparing to have a season, working three times is harder than classroom teacher, or is there, I mean, salary being out, so I think that's very reasonable. My only question on the mentor teachers and the reason I asked Michelle the question is for the whole information is, I, I actually thought that position had been assumed by our instructional coaches. And so it's just redundant to me and, and I don't really know the capacity in which they work, so that's why I asked that question. Because my understanding is instructional coaches are the help that goes for the new teachers. So that's why I had that question. I'm, I'm not really sure where that, that weighs in the, the scheme of things.
It's a fair question. Initially, that's what the plan was and then COVID hit. And that along with many other items and positions in the district had to change because there was a lot more that had to be absorbed by instructional coaches and all that. Mr. Clough kind of touched on that.
Yeah. And Dr. Diaz, the other part of this too is they are teacher mentors, but they're not mentors in that case. We have a program called Achieve New Mexico that they put in place for alternative licenser teachers that came out of last year's legislative session. So we have, we had eighteen teachers that could be part of this program, fifteen unvolunteered. So our instructional coaches have three each, including our coordinators, are mentoring three of those teachers through the Achieve New Mexico. And we didn't fail with all the other responsibilities of online learning and all that. Plus, the requirement of that mentor program is different than Achieve New Mexico because this is any teacher that comes through with a license that we have to provide them. The Achieve New Mexico one is targeted specifically at our alternative licenser teachers that are coming through alternative ways. So we felt our instructional coaches would be better off used in that realm with those alternative teachers because these are our best teachers, work with them, and these are our best teachers in the district, working with people in their building. So we got a double whammy this year based on that. So Achieve New Mexico and our instructional coaches are taking that as part of their job responsibilities, not getting a stipend. That's part of their actual dealing with the alternative licenser teachers.
So the mentor teacher stipend only goes to people that are not instructional coaches?
Correct. Yes. And we've had an influx of fourteen, I think fourteen new, somewhere around there. I have to call up the list, I got to make sure I get access, but though, we had quite a few new positions or, as Michelle pointed out, people changing from one grade level to another or going from sped into elementary and we are required by state statute to provide them a mentor teacher in their building.
So in a perfect world, is our plan to be instructional coaches to absorb that? So that we don't have that or is that, we'll see after COVID?
We'll see after COVID because actually, actually that's a true statement, Dr. Diaz, but when Pet brought out the alternative licenser, thirty three, about thirty two percent of all teachers in state New Mexico alternative licenses right now, based on that. So they want to have a program specifically addressing those that were coming in with alternative licenser, may not have any education background, so. So that's why we chose the direction to do. We're one of, how many districts across, I know we are one of, I think we're the only one in Southwest that we achieve in Mexico. They asked a number of districts across the state and we were the only one in Southwest to come up on it because we felt it was important to get our alternative teachers as those extra sessions.
All right. So then I guess the long term question for me now that this will change today with the circumstances, I guess, are the instructional coaches that are already on salary and are receiving stipends eligible to cover these people on alternative licensure with volunteer?
We haven't done that. We did issue stipends to them last year because they were doing part of that and we were low last year with the number we had. I would say, long term wise, looking at instructional coaches, we were talking about, we had actually applied for a grant and then the Achieve New Mexico came out for alternative licenser for us to have our instructional coaches take over the entire mentoring program. And that funding was cut out in special sessions, so it went away. Our plan was to try to put all mentoring underneath our instructional coaches and then maybe four or five other teachers in the district because based on numbers, there's a ratio we're allowed to have teacher, like they don't recommend having two, a mentor to two teachers. But we only have two teachers that qualify at kindergarten and pre-K and pre-K got two new teachers this year. So that mentor has to take on those two because pre-K certification. So there's a lot of intricacy to it, but we were trying to create our own, but when special session came out for us to create our own mentor program, we actually went to an in-service at the REC on how to do that, our regional education center down in Demme, and then it got cut out of the special session, so they didn't issue those grants.
I just think moving forward, if we're talking about funding, if we're going to pay, if someone's actually serving in that hole, they definitely deserve to be compensated. But if we're already paying someone the salary, we provide that by some instructional coaching, which is how I understand it for instructional coaches traditionally as we had them, maybe not known in COVID. Then it doesn't make sense to pay a stipend and pay a salary if somebody isn't paid to do that. Does that make sense for our long term? And I, I get what you're saying about COVID and assuming different responsibilities sound like, but long term, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Well, thank you for the future, Michelle.
Thank you.
Mr. McMillan.
A couple of questions in concern, I guess, on, on the increment schedule itself. At the beginning of the year, I, I had asked, was to take a look at this, but after the initial legislative session finished up and I was excited, I think we all were, and I was like, we haven't given raises to our coaches in years and we should look at changing the increment schedule. Of course, that all got going out through the window. But I still think it deserves administration, maybe administration on the board taking a real close look at the increment schedule, maybe in a work section and say, you know, this has been on there forever and, and it's kind of transitioned into a class, right? It's no longer needed. And, and maybe we can shuffle some of that, that money that sits there that maybe is allocated or never used to pay our coaches a little bit more. The other thing that, that I would recommend that we do moving forward, maybe after this year is, and I know this is a fluid document, but we always approve this kind of blank, kind of a blanket stipend document. And I would propose that we, that we treat it much like we do our bus drivers. And it's, and I think because it's a financial document, I think it was, it's important that it's brought before the board anytime there's a change. I guess that might be monthly or it might be over the month, it just kind of depends. But I think we should be transparent and we deserve, okay, we've assigned these this month and these are new additions this month. Much like we do on the bus drivers, it's like we, we get a list of bus drivers for activity and we get a list, a list of bus drivers for the activity routes. And when there's a change or there's an addition or a deletion, it's like, okay, this person was added before the board. So that's something the board really needs to see is, is kind of in our standard operating procedure, I guess, three years, do we approve drivers? Is that something we have to do? I don't know. But I think from a financial standpoint, the, the board definitely needs to approve a financial for the district and, and that's what I would propose moving forward is, okay, this is what we've got in July, this is what, this is kind of a, a living document that, okay, this is what I assign, this is what I assign. Thank you. This is looking.
There is a requirement because it is, you know, the funding behind it, that's why you have to approve it with or don't. You have to review it and consider approving it with our financials each year as part of, you know, the salary schedules and the increment schedule because you're, that's part of our budget, saying that we will be able to cover these, the cost of these. Now, what you're speaking to, Mr. McMillan, in years past, before I was part of the board member meetings, but I had knowledge of, there was a personnel report that was informational in its purpose. It was not anything that y'all approved or anything, but it gave the, the people that were hired that year, that month, you know, who left, the, I don't know if it covered the increments, to be honest with you, but I do know that there was a personnel report that was for informational purposes that was presented to the board so that you would know the population movement at the school district. And I don't know if that's something that you, you know, would want to consider.
Okay. Next, board of education, finance, and committee reports. This one's in the middle, Mr. Khan.
Patrick, do you want to present or would you like me to?
I don't have my notes that I took, so I don't know if you want to go ahead and just present, Ashley. I just want to just start and commend Michelle, the finance team and administration on that budget deficit that they were foreseeing, crunching those numbers in instead of it being a big, huge surprise here at the end. I just want to commend all you that have been crunching numbers down. I would hate to just be looking at that and then just see it come through and having to just take it out. It looks like they've budgeted that in and they budgeted that in very, very well. So my, I commend all of you. Michelle, your team, Mr. Brown and your team to, on, on getting all that taken care of. That's, that's a big, that's a big number.
Okay, and I'll just add, if you guys look at the budget comparison, I'm sure, I'm not sure, I don't think you guys are all number nerds like I am, but you probably look at the number and you're like, how in the world is this true? You know, the one point two million, blah, blah, blah. Well, keep in mind that one point two million has not been put into the budget as of yet. We have to approve that bar and then it will go into the budget. Also, not respected in these numbers is the fact that we have not paid on the new terms. So the payments for the teachers for their new contract period are coming in September. So next month, maybe a better depiction of where we're actually standing while I'm committed to that. That budget deficit will be, or budget deduction will be also budgeted and replied to them here. And, you know, basically like Michelle said, shooting for that four percent budget cash was available after we've spent things is probably not very likely this year, but to be able to. But to be able to pay our bills and to modify spending so that we can stay in the black, obviously, with number one hole at this point, lots of uncertainty. And so we just want to continue to be adjusting with what we have available and just staying in the black. When I went and ran the numbers, I still was showing like 15.4%, and that was just because we didn't have September spending. So I could tell you that once we adjusted down 1.2, and then do the encumbrances, and do the budget comparison, it's still 15.4%. And I still feel like that's realistic. So I think we'll just kind of sit and wait for next month's report, and that will probably be much more effective of our actual action.
Mr. Millen.
Question, how was our CARES Act funding playing this? Is that helping with some of the shortfall? Or have we been able to spend a good amount of that because we have until December, the end of December to spend it?
Well, we have the entire fiscal year to spend it, so we're good there. We, gosh, we ordered about $175,000 worth of, you know, technology and, you know, items to get the kids. You know, Ben was very proactive in making sure that at the moment that we could spend funds in the CARES Act, that we started using it for those kids, you know. You know, we ordered the hotspots so that they would have access to the internet. We have ordered PPE, we've ordered sanitizing equipment and supplies. We've, gosh.
The additional instructional, Ben gets the biggest spender award. I mean, with the computers and the connectivities, but they'll.
Having the biggest job in the district right now.
I mean, he did a great job getting those in, but we've got PPE sanitizing. We've also bought stuff for sanitizing for our bus contractors. There were PPE, there's been additional requests of, for some technology purchases, like software licenses and like that, that we've upgraded, that have been put in there that were also calculated. We've also moved to $20,000 in training because our people did such a great job of finding free trainings into the startup for substitutes because we, that's still the fictitional number out there that we have no idea how much we're going to be spending this year because COVID outbreaks. So we took $20,000 from the training budget and moved it over to the sub-line for payment for those to get us started. And there's some other funds that I kind of kept in reserve to allow Michelle to get some flexibility. If that number starts going down, we can request a change. The great thing about the CARES Act is there's a lot more flexibility inside of it, and the bars are not as restrictive as they would do in a normal operational budget. We can do a lot of this because of the amounts internally without the board. And we're finding some of the areas we overestimated. So Michelle's given us recommendations on where to move it to future. So we've got that in the back of our mind as our trump card. If we wind up getting low in other areas, we get some areas where we're really an overestimated high because Ben did such a great job on the technology. That we, there's that one area in our PPE costs, really, we were going based on what was being said in May, and the prices have started to come down because of competitiveness in the market, and we're starting to find that a lot cheaper than what we did back in May when we created that budget in the first place. So we do have some flexibility with the CARES Act, Mr. McMillan, moving to other areas. It'll be identified indeed, the only thing we really have to do is come and present a bar to the board and get it approved, and we'll let you know when that happens.
Sorry, can we see how this turned out?
They said additional compensation for teaching, what was the?
For teaching or COVID-related activities and substitutes fall underneath that because we may have a person ask quarantine, and then we can pay for our stuff for 14 days while they're in there. They can handle the remote, but they can't teach in person, we need to have a person in the classroom.
So we could move any amount into that, from two or plus? So like, per year spent for a coach, with 810,000, you have encumbered or spent 340,000. So we're like halfway there. Well, and that was in August, you guys are probably.
Right, so we're about half, at the halfway.
We're about the halfway point. Yeah.
Well, we can move money if we don't spend it, those other bars, up to salaries? Well, you can do that in and within it without a bar, correct?
Yeah.
Well, actually, with bars.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you were to move it from, like, purchase professional service to salary within the CARES Act line, you still need a bar?
Right. Any movement of budget from a place that it currently is into a new account line would require a bar. If it's a maintenance bar, if it's within the same function, it doesn't require board approval. But anything above that has, requires board approval.
So like, the CARES Act is funded 24/31, and then in there, there's like five different ones. So you could move anything within that, with that board approval.
Right.
But we might not know if you move money.
Right, because we have to maintain it for PED because they want every sub-function to be in the positive.
Right.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Next on the agenda is the third assessment committee report. We met last week for the first time in a few months, and I'm very curious with the meeting, with the upcoming meeting. We discussed, those representatives there from other schools, discussed the issue of masks being worn, being not worn, is going to come up. And we discussed what was going to happen in another outbreak of COVID, what kind of time we had. We talked about our reporting app, and then it was operational, the San Diego reporting app. Ben did a test while we were at the meeting, and it worked. But there are counselors and other resources available. When the students are here, this is the first day the students come back, so we'll see what their usage is as we continue to move on through the school year. We also discussed how the schools were going to be deep cleaned on Wednesday. And we also discussed the new reschedule. It was good to hear that the schools have done, or they are going to start doing, or they're doing it right now. Or they did it before today, mock re-entry drills, and they all went very well. Mr. Aldrich talked about his, we talked about Cliff's. And we talked about, mainly, and Ms. Darn talked about it during the meeting, with the school security officers, what was going to start to happen, I anticipated because it's something that we've been dealing with at Western is, we want to be called as campus police to go enforce the wearing of masks at an event or in a classroom. For example, I don't know, a kid says, I'm going to wear a mask, and I don't have to, it's my right not to. And so maybe it's easy to call campus police and say, hey, that kid's not wearing. And this is a hypothetical situation, it hasn't happened. But that kid's not wearing a mask, and I need you to compel him to wear a mask. And the officer goes and tells him, hey, you wore a mask. And he says, I'm not wearing a mask. And ultimately, you end up putting your hands on the kid and end up arresting him. And at the end of the day, the issue is he wasn't wearing a mask. And that's not a criminal offense, not wearing a mask. And that's what we want to avoid at Western, we just want really just voluntary compliance. And we're asking politely, this is our role, could you please wear it? I'm not here asking you. And that's the same thing at the Silver Schools, is that I don't have to issue any security guards. We don't want to go put our hand in somebody's, say, you aren't going to wear a mask, or you're out of here because that's going to get us in trouble. So they're going to be asked very simply, hey, if you wore a mask, and this is why, and if you wore a mask, and we're asking my parents, can you go home, and do whatever you want? That's the other story. So we discuss that because that's going to be brought up, especially when the, I think, the mid-school and the high schoolers come back, if in fact, high schoolers come back this year. But the meeting went very well, and I think everyone is prepared, especially in unprecedented timing that we're in. I thank the administrators and cafeteria workers, security guards, custodians, everybody for being prepared, as well prepared as they are with the plan that we have put in place. And I'll take any questions.
So in regards to the mask, even though there's that city ordinance, it's still, I mean, that's a different thing, or?
Not, not for us at Western. That's a city ordinance, and we operate at Western under state statute.
Okay.
So there's two different things, the ordinance, the city law, statute is a state law. And, no, it's not, it's not criminal. And we're not going to arrest somebody for not wearing a mask.
Well, yes, but they're not different, but the only option is that for them.
Now, now, yes. Now, the security guard that's so that, that we employ at Silver Schools won't escort them. They'll, they're directed to call Silver City Police Department and say, hey, these people are no longer allowing our property, and we escorted them.
Now, clearly, there are situations that our teachers, administration are going through, where there are difficult situations.
Absolutely, case-by-case basis.
But, I mean, I mean, there are special circumstances.
Absolutely, yes.
Best judgment, try to stay safe.
Best judgment, common sense.
Compassion and respect.
Do you have any questions?
You said there are additional consensers, and the people need to access them.
That's what I was told, yes, that they would be under resources available, and the counselors would be available if needed.
So should they, either the counselors or contact the counselors if they need additional counseling?
Absolutely, or the, or the, or the. Okay. Next on the agenda is the board comments and board president. What I have is I have to read for my comments is that proposed changes to the resolutions to establish a universal notice in the Public Act of all public meetings of the Board of Education at Silver and Solidity School District Number One, 2020, '21 school year. And this is, it's in your board handout. This is, it's noticed to make any amendments to the OMA, Open Meeting Act. And we don't have to do any, the last, last year, we amended it to include the two meetings and cliff, that was the only amendment we added.
Well, there's nothing changed from this, from last year, because this year, we have to adopt this, yeah?
Yes. That's correct, right, and then just adopt it again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything on that? My comments is, I know it's the first day back for K through six and the special. These kids thank you for being patient with us. And I want to welcome everybody in the virtual world and here. Hopefully by next month, we can have a closer, normal meeting, which is pretty good. We're off to a good start, I think. But I'd like to just remind everybody that not everyone's going to be happy. And I addressed this last time, but whether we go to school or not, no one's going to be completely happy. And I know even more so after this meeting, after the news we heard with the firearm system, we're probably more than more upset, but I hope that the public understands we're doing the best we can in the circumstances that we're in to make it possible for our students to come back to school. This isn't something that we, as board members, choose to make it hard on ourselves. We're doing the best we can, with what we have in front of us. And I appreciate the administrators, the teachers, the students, and parents. But I also appreciate the board members in coming together and bringing these plans together. I hope everyone had a good summer, summer's over and fall's here. And I would just like to remind the board that we have a virtual, regional virtual meeting tomorrow. There's no registration required. You just jump on a computer, and I think with your, with your address name or your screen name, you give credit for two hours of training. It's still important that we give our training units as much as possible. And that's all, yeah. Mr. Millen.
Thank you, Mr. President. As frustrated as I mentioned there was with board operations at the beginning of the meeting, I am very excited with the start of hybrid school this year, and very thankful of all the teachers' work, this support staff, IT staff, group staff. Everybody has been involved to make the hybrid happen, starting beginning today. Yes, there's going to be, there's going to be some setbacks, there's going to be some ups and downs, but we're here to support you, and we're excited. And again, it's, there's, there's lots of emotions, there's some fear, there's some unknown. But, and many of that experienced all in the same day. But excited that we started this journey, and best of luck to everybody. We're here to support you and do anything that we can. A couple other notes, as I close, and I think everybody, at least on a board level or the school level, has received the information about the NHD, our webcast. It'll be happening this Saturday, and then showcase program of our district. I think that's Saturday, eleven. And other than that, I believe the fair is this week, and as much as I would put, as much of a fair that we can have in this environment. I think there are some kids, I'm sure that will be out there showing animals, and best of luck to them.
Sir, Mr. Khan.
I just want to start my board comments off by just, you know, stating that my thoughts and prayers are with our students, teachers, faculty, and administration, for those that are tending back to the hybrid model. I just hope that it continues to, the hope, I hope they continue to be safe and healthy out there. I do, still a little scared that even though we're in the green zone, I still see cases going up. So just being permissive on that. But my thoughts and prayers are with everybody, with their whole district. I do want to give out a couple of memorials. I know the Silver Schools lost a retired teacher, Jewel May Burke. And I want to just send my condolences to her family. Also, he wasn't a teacher for Silver Schools, but I know he was a good friend to the lead, coaching legends in Silver, Mr. Tom Powers. I know he was good friends with Mr. Garcia and Coach Castillo. I know I did visit with them lots of times, and he was a good friend of mine as well, as well as one of my educators. But he did, when he was a city council, and I like, I love Grant County history, just wanted to share this, that he did some utility improvements up in Brewer Hill when he was a city councillor here, which helped the students at that time. He served on the city council for the students within the Brewer Hill area. He was very happy that he was able to help family and students at that time while he was also an educator. So my thoughts and prayers go out to his family as well, and of course, Ms. Jewel May Burke. That's all that I have, Eddie.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Who's want the negative?
I would just like to say, welcome back, the end of September, but it really feels good. There was a lot of positivity in the air this morning from teachers, students, parents, even administration. I just feel like Silver Schools is making a statement that we. that, um, we know that, that the virus is real, but we are, we have taken the proper precautions to keep our students, staff, faculty, administration, everyone safe. And so, um, I think that we're going to see other school districts follow suit as we roll this out very, very well. And that is all because of our administrators, because of our team, because of our techno, technology, um, our support staff, everyone has decided to come on board and to move forward and implement this plan and make it successful. And I truly believe that there will be other districts, um, once given the go-ahead, once they're not in the red zone, um, the yellow zone, that will see that we have done it and we've done it well. And they will, um, they'll want to copy our notebooks. So, um, just kudos to Silver Schools. I know it may have felt fast, it may have felt rushed, um, but they did it. And so, um, we just have to really give kudos, recuse our due, and that's to the teachers. They were still teaching online and they were getting their costumes ready, whether that was on the weekend or at night. Um, and so we just, we appreciate all the efforts to make this happen. Um, and we did it. So thank you very much. Um, I would also like to just, um, bring forth to the, to, to our attention that, you know, kids, kids are excited to be out there. I mean, they're, they were excited for sports last week, even if it is with only one coach and nine people. I mean, my daughter was like, heck, mom, it's something to do. And I know Michelle's daughter, you know, you see that, they're just coming out that hadn't done, you know, that haven't done sports, you know, in the past and they're, they just, they want something to do. And Silver City, you know, our availability of activities for students, for children is very limited. And so, um, I think it, it, not only is it great for their physical fitness, but it's great for mental, it's great for morale. It's just great that, that they can interact again. And I truly hope that we are able to give and be given some meaning, see when it comes to the high school fire alarm system because, um, while those are the students that are, you know, able to come out and do their athletic, I know they will benefit from being in the classroom. I truly do. Um, I can only imagine what it's like at, at some households where parents are not able to stay home and work and supervise and make sure that the kids are getting their homework done. And all of that jazz, that is, is hard. I mean, it's hard for someone who can't stay home and help. I can only imagine just like for other kids. So, um, while this is not exactly what we wanted, this is what the state has said that we can do. And, and we chose as a district to move forward with it. And even a little bit sooner than what, what most people felt, um, we set the, the boards set the bar kind of high. You know, we said, you know, we want you to come back three weeks earlier. And, and we, we, we can't, we met, we went up to that standard. And so it just goes to show, um, what this district is made of. And I think we're going to be very successful. So, um, stay safe, stay well, follow protocol and, um, we're going to have, we're going to have a great evening.
Dr. Diaz.
Um, I just wanted to say welcome back to everybody. I hope we can extend that welcome to our secondary, provided we can get everyone on board. Um, and, uh, that's, to me, the biggest priority right now is making sure we follow through on that season. And, and because of the entire district, our kids doesn't, doesn't come back. So I, I would really emphasize, because I have already done that, that that really needs to be a huge priority for us as a district in pushing forward and, and trying to get that accomplished. Um, I, I would just encourage people, I know we're excited and so just really the protocols in front to keep us at school once we've started. Uh, I can't emphasize that enough. And I really am thankful the teachers and kids they've just got in. Uh, no one likes it, um, but much appreciated. And I, I think the message, you know, I, what I told my kids is you have to be patient and the word of the year is adapt. Um, word of the year, adapt. And so I, I think our teachers have done a good job. I think our kids showed up today and showed that they're more than capable of taking that on. Uh, and we all have to follow suit as a community to help them. Um, the, the other thing that comes in a time like this is there's always going to be gaps in communication. And this fire alarm issue is clearly one of those. Uh, and so while I don't want to place blame or attack it, no, I think it's important to kind of bring it full circle and resolve those situations in a timely fashion. And I think that's what I'm trying to speak to, um, when we talk about those situations. Of course, things can involve the current, plenty of things have during COVID, but it can't be our excuse to avoid them and forward. And so we have to really hop on those opportunities to close that loop and communicate. And that means teacher to parent, student to teacher and, and, and reciprocate. When you're running into issues or identifying issues, please communicate with your te, with your teachers. I know they're open to that and parent squares works beautifully. So, you know, it's a two-way street, collaborate, um, and, and really, you know, utilize that communication halfway and, and, and talk to your, your administrators at your sites. Uh, we are here, there are issues that can't be rectified, but I, I think in a time like this where there are clearly going to be gaps, you know, the communication piece is even more important and closing the loop is more important. So welcome back, good luck, and I hope we keep pushing forward with our secondary.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz. Thank you, everyone. Um, next on the agenda is, uh, open for the comments. And I received nothing in my email for public comments. So move on to number seven, action items. Mr. King.
Okay. Um, we'll start out with my finance. Um, I request, um, approval of my checks written for the month of August in the amount of one million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. And, um, also under the, um, finance is, um, are my bars. I have my, of course, the operational, um, bar for a decrease to our budget, um, in the amount of one million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars as a result of HP one being passed in the special legislative session to reduce the school district budgets in New Mexico. Um, we received our award letter for our breakfast after the bell, elementary breakfast after the bell program for, um, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, which I seek approval for today. And, um, we also received our award for our grads program for our high school. Um, we have, uh, ten thousand dollars that has been, um, awarded to us for the grad, grads program for the FY twenty-twenty-one year. And so for my bars and my, um, checks written this month, I do ask approval.
Okay, I want to adjourn motion for approval. Mr. President, Mr. President, a second. Second, my Dr. Diaz, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Mr. Clough.
There is nothing on the transportation front for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Clough. Um, I didn't see, we didn't make any revisions, so it'd be a consideration and approves the resolution to establish reasonable notice to the public of all public meetings of the Board of Education of the Silver Consolidated School District Number One, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. President, a second.
Second.
Consideration by Mr. Millen, any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Okay.
D, consideration and approval of legal absence request. Motion? So move by Mr. Millen, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. President, a second. Any discussion, Dr. Diaz?
I just want to make sure that this is in compliance with the policy that we have described on.
Yes. Any other discussion?
And I would just, I was not, in the event of next year, I'm down by, maybe because of, you know, those kind of things, sometimes these positions can't be for sure that they'll be there when they come back or we're held to that.
If a position is available, is the word.
If.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Aye.
Letter E, consideration and approval of the asbestos management plan notification, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. Motion? Motion by Mr. President, a second. Second. Second by Mr. Millen, any discussion?
Good, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Millen.
Quick question and a fellow, and a fellow to ask, it is part of our conversation about legal coming schedule. Is this, um, so this actually paid off for our evening schedule or is it?
Yes, it is. No, it is state for. It is asbestos, it's a grant writing, I believe it's, it's asbestos slash grant writing. There is an ink print for it.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Letter F, consideration and approval of Silver Consolidated Schools, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year salary schedules.
Can I provide information?
We'll get to the discussion.
Awesome.
Motion by Dr. Diaz, a second. Second by Mr. President, a second. Go ahead.
Um, we had to provide certification to the state of New Mexico or to the PED, um, that we did apply the average one percent, one percent salary increase to all of the salary schedules except for the administrator's salary schedule. Um, HP one did say that all, um, supervisory and administrative positions would not receive an increase of one percent. And for, lucky us, we have a salary schedule that only has that, those people on it. So every other salary schedule received an average of one percent and a little bit more in that we also made sure that we maintained the, um, increase in the minimum wage that is going up to ten fifty on January first of two thousand twenty-one. And so all of our sal, our salary schedules already meet, um, the minimum wage increase as well as the minimum, uh, salary, um, the minimum one percent salary increase, um, by the head. Um, I did want to point out that there is a significant change to the administrator's salary schedule in that we added some tiers to the, um, uh, years of experience to the principals', um, positions on the salary schedule. It was something that, um, had been brought to us by the Finance Committee as an area of concern in that we didn't show any disparity from somebody, a brand new, you know, um, principal as, um, to somebody who'd been there, you know, for several years with experience under their belt. And so we did implement those changes on the salary schedule to, um, reflect years of experience as well. Um, other than that, they're pretty much standardly the same, except for the increases that I did mention.
Diaz.
So can I ask you, um, does that, like, I know they're happy to get anything, but does that cover the insurance increase?
Uh, depends on where you are on the salary schedule. You know, one percent on a custodial salary schedule of twenty-two thousand as opposed to a minimum of teachers is, you know, different. And so, and it also depends on the, um, your insurance premiums. If you're carrying an individual, you know, uh, individual premium as opposed to a family premium, Presbyterian, which is a little bit less than Blue Cross, but across the board, probably no.
This is Gary for comment. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just, I want to thank you for getting that on the salary schedule, um, you know, for the, for the review. And it just comes to show how many people to new stuff once we get it put in. So, thank you.
There's the motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Letter H, consideration and approval of resolution of Silver Consolidated Schools ratifying a certain agreement. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm not. Yeah. I'm sorry, letter G, consideration and approval of Silver Consolidated Schools, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year increment schedule. Sorry. Motion? Not a motion.
So move.
Okay, you have a second. Second by Mr. President, a second, any discussion? Mr. Millen.
President, members of the board and administration, I would, um, just like to express my, uh, concern that we, before we look at this again next year, that we take a look at it, review it, if possible, we can look at what these new increases for coaches, like things, and increments.
Sir. Mr. President.
And I would just, I guess it was kind of a question I, you know, to ask. Who, who oversees all the teachers? Isn't that, isn't the, like, the principal for the high school oversees all of the different?
Athletic directors.
Athletic directors. But even if they're not athletic, who's the main?
They, they're still on the sponsorship.
Yeah, and you and I discussed them, you felt like they were pretty, um, equal. You felt like it was, you know, the way that they were dispersed of what was, maybe, I mean, they're under, let's, let's just be honest. They're going to get maybe twenty coaches an hour, most opinion hour this year. But, um, I, I was like, you know, let's, let's look at that. If there is anything that needs to be adjusted or brought into.
Initially, if you look at the, uh, the increment schedules, you know, you see there's class A, class B, class C. And what, um, initially, when it was created, back then, there was money and, and all that wonderful stuff, is each of those was a percentage of the base teacher salary. And so, I mean, if that were the goal, it would probably take an investment into the salary schedule. But considering the effort that those coaches and sponsors put forth, I, you know, I can't say that I wouldn't, you know, that I would oppose it in any way.
So there probably is no direct correlation anymore?
No, it has been so watered down that it's probably a fraction.
Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Aye.
Letter H, consideration and approval of resolution of Silver Consolidated Schools ratifying a certain agreement between Silver Consolidated Schools and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Montgomery.
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz.
Second.
Second by Mr. President, a second. Any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next on the agendas, future, future meetings and both agenda items, next scheduled regular board meeting, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty. I want to take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. President, a second. Second by Dr. Diaz. Mr. Reynolds, do a roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Khan? Mrs. Montenango?
Yes.
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 The time is eight oh eight. I'd like to thank everybody for attending the meeting. Uh, thank you for all the hard work you do. You are adjourned.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.
Eddie must have hit a heck of a curveball. He's got that timing down perfect with the three second delay.